Meeting. I would also like to ask that you please silence all electronic devices. At this time, we'll call on Councilmember Ronnie Wall for tonight's invocation.
If you pray with me, please. Father, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today, for each mind and heart that feels the presence of this room. We thank you. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision hence, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Your righteousness transcends, excuse me, transcends all our efforts and understanding. Forgive us for our pride, the pride that puffs us up and the pride that threatens to unqualify us. Strengthen our confidence in you. You have made us to be, set us free from comparisons in order to work together efficiently. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterwards. Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our recognition of service. We'd like to recognize our former interim city manager, David Cheek. Obviously, for his willingness to step in and lead our team during the time we were searching for our next city manager, and at this time, we'll call on David Cheek to come forward and we're going to present him with a little token of our appreciation, and then we're going to have some council comment.
I'll pass. I'll pass.
David, on behalf of our city council, we'd like to thank you and show our gracious appreciation for your willingness to come in when we need it, spell the critical time for our city. And you were a steward and a champion for our causes and stood behind us and kept our staff focused. We greatly appreciate that.
If I do get elected, I get to say anything out for you.
So I will say, you know, during David's brief tenure, he, what was really good for us is he kept the entire organization very goal-oriented. It was real easy for us to lose focus during a time of transition like that. And he kept our staff focused on the items that council wanted to accomplish and the very many things that we had been working on for so many months prior to. And not only did he do an outstanding job leading the team, he really put us on the offensive, where we could have very easily had to have gone on the defensive. And we were able to get a lot accomplished, and we checked off many to-dos along the way. The only thing I did learn in the eight months or so that he was here was that he would set up meetings for he and I to meet with various people. And then inevitably, something would come up, so he couldn't be there. And I learned that that is a ploy of his. So for anybody who's got to deal with him moving forward, just keep that in mind.
Well, when this process came up, I was sort of recruited to recruit. And it was, you know, when you, if we talk about in half legs, when you have your four or five-star recruits, you know, from working with David over the years, I realized we had a five-star in our own neighborhood. And we wined and dined him. I actually took him for a biscuit at Bojangles. That was the wine and the dining of this thing. But David, you stepped up, and we never missed a beat. And we learned from you, which we did, and we certainly appreciated everything you did for this organization.
Who was the five-star in the story? Oh, David. Sorry, I missed that. On a serious note, we do appreciate your hard work. You brought a lot of experience into the city, and we needed that experience. Even though there were some times that you did disappear on us, I'm very thankful for the hard work that you gave us and the leadership that you showed us. So thank you very much for that.
David, I was, you know, I was at my office, I was walking up the street, and this car was coming around a corner, right back, coming down Michael and making a left onto Broad Street. And I heard this voice and I hollered, "Hey, Bob, hey!" And I looked around, and I didn't recognize the person. It was David. And he said, "You know, we've had some conversation about, you know, me serving as a city manager." And I said, "Yeah." And he pulled over the lot, and Richard's lot there, and we talked a minute, too. And he said, "Do you want to talk to me?" I said, "No, David. I don't want to talk to you." I don't know how he took that, but I was complimenting him. You know, I was telling him, I said, "David, you know, you've got the experience. You've got exactly what we need. I don't know. We can sit down and go back over this again." But I don't need to. I said, "The only thing I want to do is tell you, just, you know, just come on to work." And I really, really do appreciate it. And I'll say it again, that we certainly appreciate what you've done. You kept us moving, and we're better off, you haven't served during the period of time that you did. Thank you very much.
Well, I hope that you recognize how kind they have all been to you just now. And I'm not good at doing the ribbing, so I'm not going to even try to do that. But I do really appreciate the work that you did and what Ronnie said about you working hard. Not only did you work hard, but you had such a good attitude about it and so positive. And it seemed like you were having a good time. So I really appreciate that, because that really was just what we needed at that time, somebody who understood that city work is exciting and fun and visionary and all kinds of things. And you brought that to us. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Let's give David a round of applause. Next item on our agenda is a couple of proclamations. First is Fire Prevention Week. Fire Prevention Week is October 9th through the 15th. At this time, I'd like to recognize the representatives from our Burlington Fire Department, and we're going to read their proclamation and then ask them to say a few words. Gentlemen? We'll read the proclamation. City of Burlington, North Carolina proclamation and recognition of Fire Prevention Week, October 19th through 15th, 2022. Whereas the City of Burlington is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our state, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes of a location where people are at greatest risk from fire, whereas home fires cause 2,580 civilian deaths in the United States in the year 2020, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 356,500 home fires. And whereas smoke alarms send smoke well before weekend, alerting us to danger in the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in the past, and whereas Burlington residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of smoke alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas Burlington residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a threatened fire. And whereas Burlington residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas the City of Burlington's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Burlington residents that are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape," effectively serves to remind the City of Burlington it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Therefore, I, Mayor Jim Butler, and the Burlington City Council, do hereby proclaim October 9th through 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and I urge all people of Burlington to plan and practice a home fire escape as Fire Prevention Week 2022, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Burlington's Fire and Emergency Services, this the 4th day of October 2022.
Mayor, councilmembers, members of the council, on behalf of the Fire Department, I thank you for this recognition and proclamation for Fire Prevention Week 2022. This month, our Fire Department is scheduled to be in the elementary schools, where we're going to carry the safety trailer out, talk to the kids about fire safety, and develop an escape plan, hence the theme, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape." Also, on October 15th, we will have open houses at our headquarters fire station and Station 6 from 10:00 to 2:00, where we're going to invite the public to come in and bring their kids. We're going to meet the firefighters, see our equipment that we're very proud of, and then have a lot of good handouts for the kids and talk about fire safety. So again, on behalf of the Fire Department, I thank you for this recognition.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is a recognition of Arbor Day. Arbor Day is October 15th, 2022. At this time, I'd like to recognize Jason Barnhill, Horticulture Specialist, in attendance tonight to receive this proclamation. Jason here?
I'll do it for him right away.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Loeb. City of Burlington, North Carolina proclamation recognizing Arbor Day, October 15th, 2022. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that special day he sets out is for planting trees. And whereas this day, which eventually became known as Arbor Day, was initially observed in the state of Nebraska with the planting of over a million trees. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed for the nation and the world, and whereas the important role of trees in our environmental system must not be taken for granted. Trees can reduce topsoil erosion, reduce heating and cooling costs, moderate ambient temperatures, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitats for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource from which numerous products derive, such as papers, materials for the construction industry, and fuel for heating. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of beauty, joy, and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jim Butler, and the Burlington City Council hereby proclaim Saturday, October 15th, 2022, as Arbor Day in the City of Burlington. Furthermore, we urge residents of the City of Burlington to support efforts to protect our trees and to preserve our wounds for future generations.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I apologize for Jason not being here. I would like for him to be here. He's our first city's horticulturist and doing a great job for us at Willowbrook Park and the Arboretum and other places. He's been applied all over the city in different aspects, and so we're very proud to have him. And I will say Burlington is very proud to be a tree city. We take that very seriously. Jeff Parsons, before he retired, was up here many times, talking to you about Arbor Day and what it means to Burlington to be a tree city. And so we're very proud of that. I'll give you a good example. When Springwood Park was built back in the early 2000s, it was pasture land. When we bought that property, we planted over 1,000 trees in that park before we opened it. So we're very, we're very serious about trees in the city. I get calls every time we have to cut one down. Unfortunately, trees have to be managed, like a lot of other things, vegetation, you know, they just, they just won't live forever, and they, and they, and they need a little protection and upkeep so that they're not dangerous for people using our parks and along our streets. So we're very proud to be a tree city, and we thank you for this Arbor Day, and we'll live up to what we're doing with trees in many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Next item on our agenda is the Code of Ethics, disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask that there are even potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda.
None. Next item is the approval of minutes. August 15th, 2022 Work Session, and August 16th, 2022 City Council Meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Next item is additions to the consent agenda. We've been requested to add Item G, a voluntary non-contiguous annexation request, and Item H, 626 West Old Glencoe Road, voluntary contiguous annexation request. Is there a motion with the additions?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Next item is the adoption of the agenda. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with these additions.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to adopt a resolution and authorize the purchasing manager to process the sale of one Ingersoll Rand roller through govdeals.com to the highest bidder pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-270. Item B, to approve the reclassification of a police youth diversion coordinator position from Level 19 to Level 25, as recognized by the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, effective upon City Council approval. Item C, to approve the reclassification of an administrative services coordinator position, Level 24, to a water operations specialist position, Level 26, again, as recommended by the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, effective upon City Council approval. Item D, to approve an agreement between the City of Burlington and Alamance County establishing the use of the Burlington Police and Fire Training Center facility located at 212 Stone Quarry Road. Item E, to approve a temporary street closure in downtown Burlington for the Burlington Recreation and Parks Department to host a holiday magic special event on Saturday, December 10th, 2022, during the specified times at the following locations. These are spelled out in your agenda. Item F, to approve a temporary street closure in downtown Burlington for the Burlington Recreation and Parks 75th Annual Christmas Parade Special Event on Saturday, November 19th, 2022, from 7:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon at the following locations, as spelled out in your agenda. Item G, to defer public hearing and consideration of the applicant's petitions for annexation for the following properties to a future time pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160D, Burlington City Code Section 40 dot 40, and the terms of annexation agreement executed by the applicant's in city and filed in the Alamance County Register of Deeds. Those items are spelled out in your agenda. And Item H, to adopt a resolution setting a date of public hearing for November 1st, 2022, to consider a voluntary contiguous annexation for 626 West Old Glencoe Road. The parcel is approximately 10 acres in size. It is located on the south side of Old West Glencoe Road, just east of the intersection with Lakeside Avenue, and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 128108. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the foregoing consent agenda.
Move we approve the foregoing consent agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Our next item is unfinished business. Item 1, City Council would consider a request to amend the City of Burlington's local historic district overlay, LHO, boundary, in order to remove the following four properties from the district, 1004, 1010, 1016, and 1022 West Davis Street, also identified as Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers, 125084, 125089, 125539, and 125546, respectively. The properties are currently zoned medium-density residential, MDR, and local historic overlay, LHO. Just as a note, the public hearing was held on March 15th, 2022, and it was closed by City Council. This item was continued from the August 16th, 2022 City Council Meeting for consideration. At this time, we'll recognize our Planning Director, Jamie Lawson. Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, Mayor. I think you summarized much of what I was going to say, except I'll just add that this matter is in front of you and according to Section 3.20.2e, 2c, 3, where council makes a determination on any action with a request of the rezoning. I believe City Attorney Huffman has some things to add.
Mayor, you are correct. The public hearing was held on March 15th of 2022. The vote was continued to August 16th of 2022. Importantly, no further public comment would be appropriate at this time, the public hearing having been closed. However, do note that these, these things came before you in the form of four separate applications, and therefore you are having four votes denied on each of the parcels. It's been set out, as you've already indicated, it's been set out. So you will vote and have consistency statements along with each one of those.
So we will have four separate motions, four separate votes, one for each parcel. Is that correct? And just for point of clarification, the appropriate measure would be to request a motion, have that motion to be put on the floor before we have any discussions. Is that correct?
And a second. Once you got the second, then the discussion among the council is appropriate at that point in time. And then, call question.
Okay. Is everyone clear? Okay. All right. So the first item of the four parcels in discussion is parcel identification number 1250841022LLC. We'll entertain a motion for the removal of this property from the local historic overlay district.
Mayor, I will, I will make that motion. And should I go ahead and read what's in the record here, or get a second to see if we move forward, David?
I'll go ahead and read the, read the motion.
Okay. I make a motion to deny the request to amend the local historic overlay district boundary, which would otherwise allow the removal of the, of the, of the property, Alamance County Tax Identification Number 125084, and to retain the aforementioned property within the local historic district. The motion is based upon the inconsistency of the proposed request with the comprehensive plan in that Section 2, Character and Identity Goal 1, calls to celebrate Burlington's unique history and local character. Section 2, Character and Identity Goal 1, Recommendation 1, calls to encourage the preservation and continued use of historic buildings, district landmarks, and landscapes. Section 2, Character and Identity Goal 1, Recommendation 2, calls Section 2, Character and Identity Goal 1, Recommendation 2, calls to support the historic rehabilitation efforts of private property owners. The action is reasonable and in the public interest, and that the Historic Preservation Commission at their February 8 meeting unanimously recommended denial of the request. The request is incompatible with existing land uses in the area. The current local historic overlay boundary is preferable for the area.
Okay. So we have a motion for denial of the request. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in -- is there any discussion at this point amongst council on this item? Good.
I would like to say something that I very much appreciate both sides of this question having brought to our attention that our guidelines around historic preservation really needed some work, and an amazing amount of work went into this by staff and by people from the community who spoke up and talked about it. There were so many people involved in working this through. It's very difficult for me to speak against a request from someone who's been very generous with our community, but I really think that in the interest of fairness that this is the way it needs to go, and it's the right thing to do. That's just my comment.
Okay. I'd like to make a comment if I could. Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to repeat what Councilmember Hox said, but it's been a very, very difficult, very difficult decision. I think I learned a lot personally. I'd like to thank staff and all of those who were involved in looking at this issue. I think we all learned a lot, and the real benefit here is I think we have improved our procedures considerably. And I think as we go forward, we're going to benefit from that down the road. And that's with respect to the procedural aspect. On the subsequent side of this, is it -- I know, I go by that area, you know, I don't know, at least a couple times a week. That area is really critical to this historic district. It's very significant, and it just should remain in the district. I do want to say that. I think it's critical to the integrity of the district, and I would certainly like to see it remain, and that's the reason that I made a motion to deny the request to remove it.
I think, you know, this has been a long process that, as has been mentioned before, and excuse the silence as it's taken over tonight, but a lot of time and effort was put into it by a number of people. I think we were open-minded enough to realize that the existing standards needed work, and it needed updating very badly. And we, I think, called on professional people led by Jamie, but also from throughout the state to give us some recommendations. And I think the changes that were made, which was multiple, are going to be good for everybody involved. Everything changes over time. Even historic properties changes over time in terms of what you can do and what you can't do. So I think that the process was well worth the time and effort, and I cannot thank citizens in the community that participated, but also, I mean, she's one of our team members, but Jamie Lawson led this thing, has planned and erected in a very difficult time and did one heck of a good job. So Jamie, you certainly should be congratulated on your efforts.
I would like to echo the recognition for the amount of work that staff put in. We did learn, Bob subliminally stated, we learned a lot through this process, and one is that we did have an antiquated set of standards that are now up to the current level. But more importantly, you know, we've made a commitment to get some staff assistance to further make these types of discussions a lot more transitionally smooth for those that are requesting. And I think it's just an important piece, and there's folks in here today from our HPC, and then there's some from other boards and commissions. And the fact that we have these boards and commissions set up to help vet through these processes are really important, and keeping the process human and humanizing the process is really important, too, because we all have needs and we all have various aspects that are important to us as individuals, as property owners. And that doesn't matter if it's coming before P&amp;Z, it doesn't matter if it's coming before Historic Preservation or Recreation and Parks or any of our boards and commissions. We've got to keep the process human, and I appreciate everybody's efforts in doing that as well throughout this. So we do have a motion for denial and a second. Any other discussion? This is for parcel identification 125084. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Motion carries as a denial. Our next item is parcel identification number 125089, Glenraven, Inc. This request is for removal from the local historic overlay district. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion on that one. I'll make a motion to deny the request to amend the local historic overlay, LHO's district boundary, which would otherwise allow the removal of the following property, 1010 West Davis Street, also identified as Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 125089, and to retain aforementioned properties within the historic district overlay boundaries. The motion is based upon the inconsistency of the proposed request with the comprehensive plan in that Section 2, Character and Identity Goal 01, calls to celebrate Burlington's unique history and local character. Section 2, Character and Identity Goal 01, Recommendation calls to encourage the preservation and continued use of historic buildings, districts, landmarks, and landscapes. And Section 2, Character and Identity Goal 01, Recommendation 2, calls to support the historic rehabilitation efforts of private property owners. The action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the Historic Preservation Commission at their February 8, 2022, meeting unanimously recommended denial of the request. The request is incompatible with existing land uses in the area, and the current local district overlay, LHO, boundary is preferable for the area.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the second item, 125089?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like the record show that my remarks are the same to this as I initially said just a few minutes ago.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second for denial of parcel identification 125089. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for the denial. The next item is parcel identification 125539, Glenraven, Inc. Entertain a motion to recognize the request for removal from the local historic overlay district. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to deny the request to amend the local historic overlay district boundary, which would otherwise allow the removal of the property, 1016 West Davis Street, also identified as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 125539, and to retain the aforementioned properties within the local historic district boundary. The motion is based upon the inconsistency of the proposed request with the comprehensive plan in that Section 2, Character and Identity Goal 1, calls to celebrate Burlington's unique history and local character. Section 2, Character and Identity Goal 1, Recommendation 1, calls to encourage the preservation and continued use of historic buildings, districts, landmarks, and landscapes. Section 2, Character and Identity Goal 1, Recommendation 2, calls to support the historic rehabilitation efforts of private property owners. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the Historic Preservation Commission at their February 8, 2022, meeting unanimously recommended denial of the request. The request is incompatible with existing land uses in the area, and the local historic district overlay boundary is preferable for the area.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second for parcel identification 125539. Is there any discussion, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like the record show that my remarks, with the first one, you know, being reflected after the thought as well.
Okay.
All of you wanting the same thing. Is that correct?
Yes.
I think that's reasonable.
So we have a motion and a second for denial of the request for property identification number 125539. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is parcel identification 125546, Emily and Patrick Robinson. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for the request for removal from the local historic overlay district.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to deny the request to amend the local historic overlay district, which would allow the removal of the property located at 22 West Davis Street, also identified as 125546, as an Alamance County Tax Identification Number, and to retain aforementioned property within the local historic district overlay boundary. The motion is based upon the inconsistency of the proposed request with the comprehensive plan in that Section 2, Character and Identity Goal 1, calls to celebrate Burlington's unique history and local character. Section 2, Character and Identity Goal 1, Recommendation 1, calls to encourage the preservation and continued use of historic buildings, districts, landmarks, and landscapes. Section 2, Character and Identity Goal 1, Recommendation 2, calls to support the historic rehabilitation efforts of private property owners. The action is reasonable and in the public interest, and that the Historic Preservation Commission at their February 8, 2022, meeting unanimously recommended denial of the request. The request is incompatible with existing land uses in the area, and the current local historic district overlay boundary is preferable for the area.
Okay. We have a motion for denial. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for the denial of removal of property identification number 125546. Let the records reflect comments from the previous.
Right.
Is that good? Okay. We have a motion for denial. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? David, does that satisfy everything? Our next item, item two. A public hearing has been continued to consider a request to rezone property from Office Institutional, OI, to General Business Limited Use, GBLU. The property is located westerly from the intersection of Meadowwood Drive and South Church Street, addressed as 3158 South Church Street, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 112884. This item is continued from the September 20, 22, city council meeting. At this time, we'll recognize our planning director, Jamie Lawson.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. As mentioned, this is a request to rezone a property that is currently O and I, Office Institutional, to General Business Limited Use. The property is shown here, highlighted in the teal hatch. This is the existing zoning map. It's located at the westerly of the intersection of Meadowwood Drive and South Church Street. Per UDO, Section 318, this is a limited use rezoning request, and the applicant has requested specifically the following uses: child daycare center, financial services, medical offices, restaurant with a drive-through or drive-up service, and retail uses. The future land use designation for this area calls it to be suburban residential, but staff recommends that this request is consistent with the residential in the area and then the suburban commercial corridor along 70 and the mix of uses there. At the July 25 Planning and Zoning Commission, they recommended approval 3 to 1. So staff also recommends approval of this request consistent with option 1 in your consistency statement sheet. Staff is here, as well as the applicant, Ms. Clift, to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a question for staff, and I've talked about this in the past on this project, but I do want to just get some further clarification on it. I know Nolan and I had a brief discussion, but the five items with the limited use request, the five items that are requested, the one that concerns me most is the restaurant with the drive-through, and that is simply because of ingress egress on the church street. And I think, and we've had a lot, I've at least had some speak to me about the fear or concern that drive-through would get backed up into church street, similar to what we see there at Lowe's, where I guess it's Dunkin' Donuts. And Nolan explained to me how the UDO addresses that today, and Jamie, you and I didn't talk about it, but could you explain how the UDO will assist us in dealing with that?
Sure. So as you are aware, this is a request for just the rezoning. So when an applicant comes in for an actual development proposal, the item would be vetted through the technical review committee at the site plan, and so they would then have to show compliance with all of our unified development ordinance standards, which also addresses access and circulation and queuing. So the applicant would have to demonstrate compliance with the UDO.
And in the past, when, like when Dunkin' Donuts was put in there, the UDO was not in existence, so that didn't take place.
Sure. Similar with the existing building that's there right now.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Any other questions?
All of the things that are in this, the limited uses, they would all have been available to the person on this property, except for the drive-through. Is that not right?
All except for the drive-through and the retail use. So retail uses are also not permitted in the O and I zoning district, and the restaurants aren't permitted as well. But the three other uses are currently allowed in O and I.
Any other questions for staff? This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll call on any comments from the floor. Is there anyone from this side of the room that'd like to speak on this? Yes, sir. Please come forward and welcome. State your name and address so that our clerk can record that.
I'm sorry.
And don't be breaking our equipment.
I'm a little short, sir. My name is John Wadiak, and I live at 105 Meadowwood Drive, and I'm here for about the fourth or fifth time with this property across the way. As you may or may not know, that was our 15. Charles Jones had the property, and I was at every meeting. Mrs. Arnsbarger was sitting where one of you guys were, and she said we would never be bothered after the first time. I went down to see Mr. Emerson before I bought the property, and I asked him about all the restrictions because I was buying the property. It was costing me quite a bit. And he said, "No, Mr. Wadiak, there is no problem. This is country club forest property." And I believe you know that area, because I've met you walking. And as I went to Mr. Emerson, I also asked to see the engineers and the planning board. And we went into the big office there, there was people working, and I talked to all the engineers about it. "Mr. Wadiak, that will never be changed." Well, after two or three meetings that we had, just like this here, or downstairs or up here, what happened was they did change it. The one time I went up to Jersey because my mother was sick, I didn't make the meeting, and sure as baloney, it happened. They changed to O and I. Now you have the bank sold off the property to the child dentistry right next door, and you got them, in order to turn in, they have to use the center lane. In order for me to go out, I have to use the center lane because you can never really cross because you got traffic both ways. The lights are never synchronized, you know, to meet one another. So you have to wait for this light, then you go over and you wait, then no more traffic on this side, and then you can go. Now, as you know, there's an ambulance service there, right around the corner, right? You have a fire department one block away. Are you going to let this happen to where there's an accident there? Not somebody, never mind somebody getting killed, I hope to God, but what they will cause for people to come into the middle of Highway 70, and it's in the middle. Now, there's two other restaurants, half a block, Bojangles and another one. Anyway, if an accident happens in a fire department or an ambulance turns in, they can't get out. out. They can't do their job. I know they can use other avenues, but once you get trapped in traffic, that's it. Now, I've been fighting this so many times. Like I said, Mrs. Omsbarger was on this committee. She guaranteed us after the first time that you'll never be bothered again. Well, we were bothered three or four, five times. Mr. Emerson guaranteed me that that's country club property, and none of that will change. And I spoke to each one of them, because I did not buy the property from Mr. Ellenberg until I found out all this. But none of it counted. It seemed like the real estate people have more power than anybody. Now, I don't have lawyers. Real estate people, I guess they have lawyers. I can't spend that kind of money. I spend money taking care of my home, and I think I've got a beautiful home, and I take care of it. I go down in the creek, I cut the property, well, usually the city cuts it. But anyway, that's about all I have to say, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Please step forward and state your name for our clerk.
My name is Iran Kozzi, and I am the resident of 103 Meadowwood Drive. So, as Mr. Mayor, you rightly pointed out that the problems with the traffic, and Mr. Wadiak talked about the past, how this place is being rezoned multiple times, even after the commitments, but I would also like to bring to your attention that this is around the neighborhood, and we have kids around in all that area, like my kid's 10, six years old. So when we have something like drive-through in that area, that creates more mess in the traffic, and then, right now Meadowwood Drive is already suffering because of the dentistry that is there, as Mr. Wadiak said. And on the other hand, when we have drive-through, it comes with the waste of fuel, the pollution, which is not good for kids at all, and also for the adults. So this property is right beside the pediatric dentistry. So if this becomes busy, this becomes crowded, the pollution thing, things happen more, so probably not good for kids. At the same time, there is only one walkway which is adjacent to this property. There is no walkway on the other side of the road. So all the pedestrians just walk beside this property if they are walking on the church street. So with this drive-through coming into picture, it's not even good for the pedestrian's safety. So my request is, at this point of time, probably, it's not good for the neighborhood to consider this request. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else on this side would like to speak on this item? Anyone on this side? Would like to speak? No more public comments. We'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Any questions for staff or for the petitioner at this point?
Sidewalks, no one was mentioned. There was, help me, there was in development, during development there, was there any, there was no sidewalks required along the church street quarter?
Kathy, did you have a question? Did you go say something?
No.
Wow, that's a good answer.
Well, I just, I guess I want to say that I know that this area was designated ONI for a reason, so that, to protect the neighborhoods. I think the thing that changes is that the world changes. I mean, I think that was 20 years ago, that that was designated ONI. I think having, the bank industry has changed. We're seeing a lot of turnover in buildings like that, and I just feel like we have to acknowledge the difference. Having empty buildings isn't good for anybody, so that's all I have to say.
Mr. Brother, I'm assuming you're talking about the neighborhood, this parcel that's outside of the park?
Yes, yes, I'm talking about, that parcel has, but any property that's not developed is not. Correct.
Well, like the properties to the west, between this building and Coke Point, which I will call it.
Sidewalk all the way through.
Okay. But not up in the next.
Right, right, right. I'm talking about on that side of the road, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, to Kathy's point, there is going to be, it would be functional as ONI, whatever would be there, it's going to be used regardless. It's just whether or not we have confidence that the UDO can handle, you know, through TRC, and can handle the loads for some of these uses.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Does the, Jamie, does the traffic study come in after the fact?
No, no idea. It would be part of the review of the site plan application. So essentially, the TIA would be done for this.
We typically request them to do that before this is done. Hysterical problems.
I can't imagine that a restaurant with a drive-through would be appropriate for that particular piece of property, especially with the traffic.
Well, the TIA or the Traffic Impact Analysis helps to identify any improvements for the site and for the area, based on, you know, different uses and based on the area characteristics. We won't know that until one is done.
I'm sorry?
We won't know that until that is completed.
There is a property to the west part of this that you could do, you know, a drive-through lane. So if there's some options, they're considered as a good for the site plan process if that's appropriate.
Right. Nolan, can you, everybody here, that, can you kind of go through that process in terms of what's done tonight, and then what will be done at the next step?
If the rezoning is approved, the next step for the applicant would be to, you know, request a site plan approval. So that would include transportation's review, if a TIA is required, that's dependent on how many trips are generated, and also the number of trips can help process to dictate how many vehicles are going to, we're expecting to see queued up into the drive-through lane. So there are some standards in the UDO that staff looks at in terms of trying to assess how many queued vehicles there would be in a drive-through lane. And so, you know, there are some space on the property, you could potentially put a drive-through in a lane where pavement doesn't exist now. It just depends on what use is proposed and what site plan looks like. All that gets looked at with the site plan process.
Do we already know a traffic count just on South Church Street today?
I mean, we know them. DOT has them on their website. I would estimate in the 20,000, plus or minus range. I'm totally estimating that for you.
20,000 cars a day going through there, and we're thinking about...
How would that compare to Huffman Mill Road?
It'd probably be similar. We can get you that information if you'd like it.
I'm sorry?
We can get you the details counts, if you'd like that information, but I'm just trying to give you some rough essence. A lot of our number routes in town are 15, 20, some 25, that just depends.
But I think the point I want to make, no matter if this is approved here tonight by the council, that the details comes into what's going to be required when the TRC gets actually presented.
Correct.
That's when the final decision is going to have to be made in reference to traffic, in reference to inflow out, and so forth and so forth.
Correct.
That's just the process that goes through.
Yep. It appears to me, back to your question or statement, the properties on Huffman Mill have a deeper staging area, to me, than what that bank has.
Some of them do. I know when Starbucks came through years ago, you know, we really had to get creative in working with their site plan.
Right.
And you see the traffic, it's a lot of traffic there. But there's a bypass lane that helps maneuver traffic. It still gets congested, but, you know, there's a turn lane, a right turn lane there on Huffman for that site to try, and we haven't seen, from what I've seen there, I haven't seen traffic backed up on there, onto the, on the Huffman Mill Road from the Starbucks. So, you know, it's really a lot about staff working with developer to get it to a place where we feel like, you know, it's going to be safe. And DOT is part of this, and, you know, they have concerns, particularly about the Dunkin' site, you know, it's good that it's popular, and people, you know, go into our retail establishment, but it does create some issues that we need to, you know, keep in mind going forward.
Dunkin' Donuts is dangerous. That's dangerous.
That is.
Back down. And for a lot of reasons, but early in the morning with the sunlight, you can't see, you've got reduced site visibility, and then the next thing you know, traffic is backed up there. But, and the only place that is similar to me on Huffman Mill Road is Cookout. Cookout can queue into Huffman Mill Road. I haven't seen any issues at Starbucks, but that is my concern, and the UDO very formally and technically addresses this, where when both of those other businesses opened up, we didn't have the UDO to lean on.
Right, yeah.
So I think that's the key, is that we feel confident that the UDO is going to handle this, and then my conversation with you, I think, probably will.
Back to Jim's point, the bigger issue is on Friday night, if you're trying to go, if you're going to take a left, if you wanted to enter the shopping center beside the restaurants you mentioned, and then with the restaurants in the end, that turning left is always a little bit dicey on the road. I think frankly, we've had to learn to, we've learned popularity creates some issues, and that's one of them, let's be honest. But same can be said, trying to pull across from other exits across the road to try to get to the far lane, so I have enough faith in the technical review staff that they will make the decision that's going to be, certainly look at safety in that area, and I feel confident with you guys, that's what's going to come out of this.
Ready, we'll entertain a motion on this item?
Let me see, I'll do it. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the request to rezone property, zone Office Institutional to be rezoned, General Business Limited Use, GBLU. Property is located westerly from intersection of Meadowwood Drive and South Church Street, addressed as 3158 South Church Street, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 112884. The motion is based upon the consistency of proposed rezoning with comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4, land use of the comprehensive plan calls this area to have suburban residential uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential and commercial uses. This action is reasonable and in public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial uses in the area, and the request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
We have a motion on item 2. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Really noted. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 3. A public hearing has been continued to consider a request to rezone property from medium industrial MI to light industrial LI. The property is located northerly from the intersection of White's Kennel Road and Old Trail Road and Anthony Road, addressed to 1601 Anthony Road, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 120395. This item is also continued from the September 20, 22, 2022 city council meeting. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie Lawson again.
Good evening again. So at the request of the applicant, they are seeking this item to be carried to the October 18 city council meeting. The applicant is here, if you have any questions.
There'll be a motion to continue this to the October 18.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second to continue this to October 18. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item under new business, city council will consider appointments to the City of Burlington's advisory boards and commissions effective upon city council approval. At this time, we'll recognize our public information specialist, John Vernon. Welcome, Mr. Vernon.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm coming back to you again with another appointment to an advisory board and commission. This time, it's a Board of Adjustment, and you have an applicant in front of you, and if you have any questions or concerns, please let me know.
Thank you. Does everyone have the, get the information on the applicant? I think it's Trish McAllister, is that correct?
Yes. It's David's doing.
Looks well qualified for that position.
She is. She is. Everyone be in favor of this recommendation to Board of Adjustments? That is correct, Board of Adjustments?
Yes.
Yeah, good.
Any motion? Yep, let's make the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment to the advisory board commission as recommended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Trish McAllister to the Board of Adjustments. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, John and David, for working on this and getting someone on that commission. That's really important. Our next item, new business, item 5. City council will consider proposed amendments to the city council, City of Burlington City Code of Ordnances. At this time, we'll recognize our city attorney, David Huffman.
Counsel, I recognize that this is the under new business, but this is the third time that you've seen this.
Right.
It's the first time of the night of last month, the work session, and followed by the 20th, the next night, and now it's on, and that's really by way of statute, because this addresses the issue of enforcement of our ordinances, and now the state statutes require that if we're going to be talking about a misdemeanor or any sort of criminal remedy for a violation of our ordinances, we have to, cannot vote on it the first night that it's introduced to you. So it was introduced to you two weeks ago, and for you tonight, this evening. I recognize that you've all also had this for about four months, I mean, four weeks, and I've had an opportunity to talk with each of you about some of these. Just to give you a little bit of a brief background, all of this was precipitated by Senate Law, Session Law 2021-138, the General Assembly in 2021, when they basically took the ability of cities, took away the ability of cities to turn around and charge criminal sanctions for violations of our ordinances, for most, in a blanket way. You can go back, and that is exactly what we've done, and go back through each and every part of our ordinance, and we've done that over the course of the last six to eight months. And so, in trying to look and see where it was appropriate that you have a criminal sanction there as opposed to a civil penalty, and that is exactly what we have done. I want to thank all the different departments because they put a great deal of work into it, going through the different portions of our city code, trying to figure out what was appropriate, and that is what the result is here. It's basically a tweak, and we've taken the blanket misdemeanor remedy out, and gone back in and put it in in just those special places where truly you need the ability to be able to take some quick action, or whether or not you have a situation where an individual or a group of individuals are not, just not being compliant with some of our ordinances, so you still have a criminal sanction there. You've also noticed that we have also inserted here where we simply had the injunction or some sort of equitable remedy, we've also put in, taken the opportunity and dealing with the various departments, as I said, maybe a civil penalty, which is, of course, is allowed under 20-1, General Statute 20-175, a civil penalty, and that is part of this also that you can look at. While we were doing that, and recognizing that you... While we were doing that, and recognizing that you last took a wholesale look at this, or we last took a wholesale look at this, when we rewrote the city code back in October 1 of 2018, we asked various department heads, how's it working for you? And is anything that needs to be tweaked? And they came forward and did a very good job, and I call this, this is the second group of either package, what I call the fixes, and we've gone through and tried to remedy some of the, some of the problems that they have had, sometimes it's just technical stuff, you see where the state's has maybe changed, for example, prior to COVID, you didn't have the ability to meet remotely, well, now our ordinances reflect what the state statute allows us to do, and there's a lot of that here in these, in these tweaks. And I think it's, it's going to help us, help our staff as they're out there on the streets trying to enforce some of these. There are two areas that bring to your attention, that we are attempting to give the, our staff a little more, and that would be authority, and that would be in Chapter 34-55, regarding our streets and sidewalks, and it addresses the blocking and repeating of streets and sidewalks, we're trying to give them a little more teeth, give the, our folks the authority to address any sort of problems that we may have there. There was also just a, a general little tweak on the number of, in our animals and files section, in the sense is the number of dogs that we have, we've all known it's been three per household, we want to make that clear, that it's per household, and not per adult in the household. As ludicrous as that may seem, we did want to clean that up in this, and that's exactly what we have done. There's also a section here pertaining to camping on city property, obviously, you recognize that our parks and our streets and our sidewalks and our city hall property is not set up for, for camping, and, and most of the cities in the state do have some sort of provision about that, we've taken a look, and we've, we've put together one for us here, that we think if we, we give our staff code enforcement, as well as recreation and police, if we, we put a little authority, we clean up, if we need to do that, but as far, we've not had too much of that problem, but this will be available. And the last one on there that says from Chapter 40, water and sewer, if Bob Patterson would like to address it, it's the, by the nice title, fats, oils, and grease control. If you want to ask any questions, you're free to do so, but, and as I, as I understand it, this has been the policy of the city for quite some time, and now it's going to be in the form of the orders. We just ask that you adopt those amendments that they have, these have been.
So everyone should be well versed on these, this is third, third rendition, as David alluded to, so any questions? Is there a motion on item five for the proposed amendments?
Mayor, I'll make a motion, we adopt the amendments as outlined by City Attorney, as explained, and have been explained for the third time.
We have, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I thought if David went any further, I was going to feel like we were camping out on City Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Huffman. At this time, we'll move into our public comment period, and we have our friend Robin Winteringham. Welcome.
Good evening, my name's Robin Winteringham, I live at 3117D Commerce Place, and tonight I'm here to invite you all to our housing forum. On Wednesday, October the 19th, at Ebenezer United Church of Christ, we're hosting a housing forum. It'll be different from other forums, or fora, as the Latin may be, that you've attended. It's being facilitated by a group that we've used before, and it will be conducted in an open space type setting. What I mean by that, instead of coming to an event, sitting down in rows, listening to a speaker, having a nice lunch, and going back to work, we instead will be in circles and small groups, talking about housing needs here in Alamance County. We have almost 100 people registered so far, we certainly hope that you all will attend. I believe that everyone in the room is familiar with how the cost of housing has increased, not just here, but primarily all over the southeast and the west coast, I understand, and many of our families are being priced out of the market. I myself, returning here after law school was surprised at the way that rents had increased, I decided to visit eviction court, and for three weeks, I've sat in eviction court, just to see what happens, only because one of our housing partners had said to me, you won't believe how many people get evicted every week, and I thought, it's true. I've been three times this past week, 67 people were evicted just in the morning session, the week before that was worse, and then according to Chief Magistrate Jeff Holland, about six weeks ago, in one setting, he evicted 109 families. I'm sure in your mind, you think, well, some of those people probably needed to be evicted, I don't deny that, I, I feel confident that's probably true. But I also know that when you evict a family, you evict everyone else who lives with them, it's not just the person you see, it's their spouse, it's their kids, it's their elderly parent they take care of, you're evicting a lot of people, and I know that that's the law, I understand that, but I also know that kids need grass to play in, and they need a bed to lay their head, and parents need the opportunity to be parents, and not have to worry about being evicted every six months, every nine months. I also think here in Alamance County, we're wise, I admire the work that you all do, and also the thoroughness and thoughtfulness that you give to it, and I think that if we come together as a community and talk, I think we can probably identify some ways that we can afford people the opportunity to be housed more securely, and to improve their lives, and also to improve the outlooks for their children. So I'd like to invite you, I'll approach if that's okay?
Sure.
I have invitations for you, and also, just because Heidi's going to laugh at this, you can use your smartphone to scan the QR code, but if you're a little old fashioned like me, you might want a website address, so that's on the back, too.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Oh, I would love for you all to come.
But also, the dress on the back, also, appreciate that.
I'm so glad, you're the first person to say, oh, my God.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
And is, Robin, is this forum, is it for, is it awareness, or is it more substance to this, can you tell us just a little bit about?
The, the purpose of it is to be substantial, not just to discuss. What we hope to come, the outcome to be, and what our facilitator will be talking about, is trying to identify what our residents, people who live here, identify as the three most urgent needs for housing. I don't know what those will be, I know what we hear on the phone every day at work, I know what I hear in court, but it will be a chance for people to be heard, and hopefully we can, from that, come out with some solutions. In fact, the facilitator promises that when people leave at 2:30, it's 8:30 to 2:30, when they leave at 2:30, we'll have a document to put in people's hands, to take with them and read, based on what we've talked about that day. I think it'll be really interesting, it's also a casual event, nobody has to dress up, you can come as you are, we'd love to have you. Any questions, concerns?
Any questions for Robin? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That concludes our public comments, at this time, we'll transition into council comments, I do want to remind everyone that we have an e-waste collection that was scheduled for this past Saturday, but due to the storm that came through, I think it was moved to October 22nd, can somebody verify that, is that correct, Robin? So it's moved to October 22nd, so that's for the e-waste collection, and that'll be at our Summit Avenue facility, is that right? Speaking of which, we, we got a brief update last night at our work session, but a special thank you to our entire staff, our entire city team, for the work that they did, the outstanding work during this past week's storm, the hurricane that came through, a police and fire, we know police was really busy, and fire was really involved, but a special thanks to those in Public Works, who were out really grinding away at just keeping us moving, keeping us mobile as a city, and if you really want to know the value of your team, let's give yourself a crisis and see what happens, and it was truly amazing, and I want to just personally tell all of our staff how much I love you and appreciate you, and I think council feels the same way, but, and there's a lot of work still to be done, so Public Works will be really for the next couple of weeks.
I saw it, I'm at like 6 o'clock.
Yep, yep, so you just take it for granted, but it's, it's relevant, the work that they do is extremely relevant to our quality of life. And then the last thing I had, the carousel, the carousel's coming together rather nicely, I was petrified with the storm, the first thing I did Saturday morning is got up and rode, looked to see if any windows blew out, but we've got windows in, I understand the animals are back in Burlington, is that right?
Yes.
So we got the animals back, somebody said, how'd they get here, and I said, it's a livestock truck. So hopefully we're on target to get this wrapped up next 60 days, is that kind of?
I hope so.
Okay, we'll cross our fingers on that, but anyway, it's all moving in the right direction. Any other council comments?
And last Saturday, yeah, there was no flooding, there was flooding in the city park, which I don't think was bad this country, it wasn't, but you can say for the carousel, it would not have been damaged since the carousel now has been moved out of the flood zone, so, why did you all move it, well, that was one of the reasons, pretty big one, piece of equipment there.
National treasure.
Yes, so that's the reason it was moved and why we've, we've been very lucky, we've come several times, very close to water getting into that structure.
Any other comments from council?
Yes, Chief Long, I'd like to know the number of calls at 2155 Hanford Road, is that not where the, we're having some problems, is that the address, do you know, off the top of your head?
I'm not sure, is that a business?
No, that is, that area, yes, it is a business, it's where some of the drug activity is taking place.
So you have calls for service?
Yes, just calls for service there.
I can get that back to you.
All right, thank you.
Or do you have a specific period of time, one year, two years, five years?
Yeah, one year's fine.
All right, yeah, do we have that for?
Anything else, council? At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Anyone have a?